My councilman John Riggs.
I would like to ask our director of the downtown development authority, Ellen Modrow, feel lead us in prayer this morning.
Mr. Modrow.
Thank you. Father, I thank you for this day. We should be grateful for your kindness that you show us, Lord. We want to be grateful for all of our council and leaderships in this city and these department heads, Lord. I just thank you that you bring good people that care. Lord, I pray that because of that, that we will seek your guidance and your wisdom, Lord. Pray we look for harmony and unity and work together, Lord, to take us where we need to be. We just ask that you would be the one that inspire us and encourage us, Lord. We just dedicate this evening and this time to you in Christ's name.
Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll move down to agenda item three, recognitions and public presentations. We have a presentation by Richard Deal with Lanier Deal and Proctor on how the city financially ended fiscal year 2019. Mr. Deal, if you will.
Okay, again, just wanted to thank the council for our duty to serve as the city's auditors. In the work session, we did go through the financials. As you can, as we saw, the city is very strong financially, in great financial condition. Your finance staff, Cindy and her staff do a great job for the city. So again, just want to say the city is doing great financially. If y'all have any questions, if other questions, just let me know.
Okay. And I think there's a typical recommended amount for its fund balance is concerned. That's 25%.
That's correct. And you're at 45%.
Okay, so the city is at 45%.
Which is very strong.
Okay. Okay, in the general.
That's, yeah, the general fund balance.
All right. Are there any questions by council? Seeing that there's no questions by council, we thank you.
All right. I guess you just need to approve, you know, in your minutes that you approved the audit.
Receiver of the audit.
Okay.
All right, we'll take care of it.
And just want to thank the mayor and council for what y'all do for the city and serving the city.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item three B, which is a presentation by Fair Count regarding the 2020 census.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Evelyn Jedon, and I represent Fair Count. I, Fair Count is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that was formed by Tracy Abrams with the purpose of assuring that all Georgians are counted in the upcoming 2020 census. We want to partner with other organizations that have the same goal in mind, and we have resources that we are willing to share with other organizations and most of all, share with the community. Georgia has been identified as a hard-to-count community with black men being specifically indicated as those who do not regularly participate in the census in high numbers. Therefore, Fair Count has formed an organization named Black Men Matter. And we want to work with you, if you can point us towards organizations that reach out to different people in the community. We want to help you do that. Also, this year is the first time that the census will be given online. There are three options: by mail, online, and by telephone. And because of that, a lot of people do not have access to the internet. Fair Count will actually install internet in areas that are hard to count. And all you would have to do is contact me or give me someone that I can contact so we can set up an installation. Also, Fair Count is organizing a bus tour. The bus tour is going to cover all 50 counties. Some counties, they are going to cover twice, is according to the population. And what I would like to do is read the mission of Fair Count. The mission of Fair Count is dedicated to partnering with hard-to-count communities to achieve a fair and accurate count of all people in Georgia and the nation in the 2020 census and to strengthening the pathways to greater civic representation. So Fair Count is here. We want to work with you, and we want to see that all Georgians are counted in 2020. And thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments by council?
Do we have a contact information?
Yeah, contact information, are you local or?
Yes, all right. What I have here is, this is our brochure, which tells you all about Fair Count. Also, if you're interested in learning more, you can go to faircount.org. And I have commit to count cards. And at the end of the meeting, if everybody would sign one for me, I'll fill one out. It would be greatly appreciated. And thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item four, which is public comments. Leo, do we have anyone for public comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move down to agenda item five, which is the consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. Line item eight, approval of minutes from January the 7th, 2020, council minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let it show that agenda item five has passed. We're down to agenda item six, which is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application RZ 19-12-01. James Hendry requests a zoning map amendment of .692 acres of property located at 8 North Mulberry Street from R3, which is medium density, multi, multiple-family residential, to the CR commercial retail zoning district in order to redevelop a existing warehouse building as a commercial building with multiple units of business. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jason, if you will, give us some insight.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll show some slides on the screen as well for you to follow.
Okay.
So the applicant and property owner, James Hendry, is completing the redevelopment of an existing metal warehouse building located at 8 North Mulberry Street, which was previously being utilized as a small one-bedroom apartment. The previous existing metal building was recently redeveloped as a commercial building with multiple units of business, which is not permissible use by right under the subject property zoning of R3 multi-density, medium-density, multifamily residential. A zoning map, so staff is recommending a zoning map amendment from the R3 to CR, commercial retail zoning district. This recommendation allows to propose use to be an appropriate transitional zoning consistent with the adjacent zoning to the rear of the subject property. And so if you look on your screens, you can see the current zoning map. The property in question is the highlighted property with the yellow hatching. You can see it's zoned R3, and the two properties to the south of it are also zoned R3. And the properties to the east of that are zoned commercial retail, and the properties to the north and to the west are zoned light industrial. So the DSDA and staff recommend approval of the zoning map amendment request. At the January 7th, 2020 planning commission meeting, the commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the request with staff conditions included in your staff report and council packet. And also on your screens is the current image of the property that's been redeveloped and what the property looked like before. So you can see the property owner, Mr. Hendry, has made a substantial investment and a substantial improvement in this property, and it's consistent with the commercial retail zoning. The pictures on your screen now are the light industrial properties that are to the north and to the west of this property. And that's just a plot of the property. I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone here to speak for the request? All right, seeing that there is none, is there anyone here to speak against the request? All right, seeing that there is none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there any discussion by council? Okay, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that agenda item six has passed. We'll move down to agenda item seven, which is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application for an alcohol license section 6-5 to 301 One Stop in the Lay Bot at 17402 North Highway 301, State Spur, Georgia. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, planning and zoning, is there an issue with this?
No.
Okay. Fire, chief?
Chief.
All right, chief?
No issue, Mayor.
Okay, Kane?
No issues, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak for the request? All right, is there anyone here to speak against the request? All right, seeing that there is none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that agenda item seven has passed, and we'll move down to agenda item eight, which is a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2020-02, a resolution authorizing the closing of the bank account for the 2016 Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Penny, if you'll give us a little insight on this.
Mayor, members of the council, when we receive community development block grant funds, we are required to open a separate bank account. And so this is a 2016 account. All those funds have been expended. And so what we're asking is for your authorization to be able to close the account.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And we recommend that to you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion by council?
Just a quick question for Jason, if that's right. Could you just briefly describe that grant of the project, excuse me?
So this one is the Kent Street, Love Street, Bryant Street, drainage improvements utility project, which is immediately adjacent to the current CDBG project that's under developer design.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jason. All right, if there's no further discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, we'll move down to agenda item nine, which is consideration of a motion to approve the Sixth Amendment to the lease agreement with AT&amp;T regarding the city water tower access lease located at 201 Lanier Drive. Mr. Penny, if you'll give us some insight?
Yeah, Mayor, currently, AT&amp;T leases space on our tower, and they're simply changing out some equipment, and they need to, we just need to revise the lease in order for them to be able to do that. And that's why we come here before you today. This does not allow us to increase the lease rate or anything, but it's just covering the paperwork to allow them to be able to change out the equipment.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that agenda item nine has passed, and we'll move down to agenda item 10, consideration of a motion to award a contract to Suez Incorporated in the amount of $37,470 for emergency repairs to well number 10 with funds from the water sewer system revenues. Mr. Penny?
Yes, sir, Mayor, we were having some, we saw some things going on at our well where we were not producing water, but we had a high usage of electricity. And so we were able to discover that we had a problem, and so we need to remake that repair. And so we recommend to you that you award this contract, approve the expenditure of these funds in order to be able to repair, make the electrical repair, equipment repair, so that we can get that well back online. So we recommend to you that we approve the $37,470 with Suez Incorporated in order to get that work done.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item 11, which is a consideration of a motion to authorize payment to Continental Roll LLC in the amount of $39,395 to upgrade an eight-inch water main to 12-inch water main. Mr. Penny?
Yeah, Mayor and council, when we have projects that come before us where a development is going on, and in this case, a private developer had to install some new water lines, and basically, his, all he needed was eight-inch water lines in order to be able to serve his development. But when we are, when we see these developments going on, sometimes we will ask to upsize that line for future development. So in this case, we asked the developer to upsize the line to a 12-inch line for future development. And their engineers certified that all they needed was an eight-inch line. We asked for the 12-inch line. And so what we're asking is for approval or paying the additional cost of the $39,000 to increase the size of the water line to the 12-inch for future development. And we recommend that to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion by council?
Behind this property, isn't there multi, potential multifamily or something like that? Is that the need for that?
I'm going to ask Steve if he can help me with that one.
Yes, there is multifamily potential behind this. It's a PDP development, I think, with personal residential residential.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. Any further discussion by council? Seeing that there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that agenda item 11 has passed. We'll move down to agenda item 12, which is consideration of a motion to award a professional services contract to Hussey Gay Bell Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $139,340 for modifications to blowers and influent pumps at the wastewater treatment plant with funds approved as part of the 2020 capital improvement budget, item WWD 168 and WWD 169. Mr. Penny?
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, what we're recommending is that you approve the contract with Hussey Gay Bell Incorporated. Now, what this work is, this is not the actual repairs. This is for the engineering and oversight of the repairs that are going to be made. And we recommend that this contract not exceed $139,340. In the future, we will come back after they have done the engineering work, where you actually will approve the project that's going to be done, because the actual project is probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.4 million. This is for our engineers to do the design work, but it also includes over, contract management and all that as we get into the project. So we recommend that you approve this $139,340.
Okay. All right, any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that agenda item 12 has passed, and we'll move down to agenda item 13, which is other business from city council. Is there any other business from city council? Okay, see?
I did have one quick question. The consultant for the Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Do we have to bring his contract up before us?
That is a contract with the county.
That's a con, oh, I see.
The county, the county's paying for that.
Oh, that's good.
Now, they might bill us later, but...
Absolutely, good deal. That's a good deal. And, all right, and just kind of give some insight as to what Councilman Boyham and City Manager Penny is discussing is that we had the opportunity to meet with the consultant in regards to parks that's inside the city of State Spur that's owned by the city. And what I hope is, is that we'll be able to get a blueprint or a master plan of source of how we can upgrade our parks for the city, that's going to be able to, you know, help provide that quality of living for those that lives within that main corridor of the city. We do have some hopes and dreams as far as parks are concerned within the city. And one thing that we discussed openly in the work session is maybe we can get to a point where we're a city that have pocket parks across, and most of our city would be in walking distance of a park. That's a long-term dream, and it's going to take us years to get there, but I think that we're starting in the right place by addressing what we have, and hopefully in the near future, bring on some new, some new opportunities for the citizens in the city. So we're really excited about that. So we're working good with the county. We want to keep going that way so we can better serve all of the citizens in our community. With that being said, is there any other business from city council?
I just want to say, Mayor, could you indicate to the people in the audience what three parks we're actually considering upgrading for that purpose?
Okay. Well, the parks that we are, that we are addressing on the city side is Memorial Park, but those of us that's from here, we know it is Farrow Park, Luetta Moore Park, and Grady Street Park. The fourth park that's a part of this conversation is Fletcher Park. The reason why we got that set to the side is because the county is going to be funding that totally on their own. So what we didn't want to do was condolute the process and get involved with the process that's being done on the county side, but it's all in conjunction of us being able to serve the overall citizenry as well. So we think, again, we think we're headed in the right direction, but again, we've got to keep our fingers crossed and make sure that we dot i's and cross i's during this process. Okay. All right, any other discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no further discussion by council, I'd like to take a point of privilege to announce to the city that on February the 18th at 5:30, I'll be doing a state of the city address from the council chambers. We're inviting everyone to come out and be a part of this as we discuss with the city the state of the institution and/or the organization financially in far as what do we see as the vision for the city moving forward. Again, that'll be 5:30, February the 18th, that'll be right before the city council meeting. That's scheduled on that same day as well. So we invite everyone to be a part of that. With that being said, on agenda item 14, city manager comments.
Yes, sir. I have two things. Mayor, I think for the record, we need to get the council to approve the audit report that was submitted by, so I think we, if you don't mind getting a motion to approve the audit report for 2019, so you have it in the record.
All right. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the audit report provided by Lanier Deal and Proctor on how the city financially ended for fiscal year 2019?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that the audit approval has passed. Any further comments by our city manager?
Yes, sir. One last item. At each of your place, you have, you should have a memo to me from Finance Director Cindy West and Mayor, members of the council. As a practice, we try not to ever put anything before you on your agenda that wasn't sent out previously. However, we have this matter that I would ask that you would allow me to ask you to consider approving, authorizing the mayor to sign the authorization form. We are required to, as a city, because we participate in the GMA 1998 lease pool, we are required to have a Global Markets Entity Identifier number, and we need to have that form approved. And it's a requirement that, to have that number to satisfy the requirements of the Dodd-Frank Act of 2010. The cost to do this is anywhere from $83 to $147. And so, again, I would ask and recommend to you that you authorize the mayor to execute that authorization form on behalf of the city.
Okay. All right, council, is there a motion to splurge and take the risk on the $83 to $147 by signing this document?
Mr. Mayor, can we have some discussion? I'm sorry, I don't know what this is. Can you tell us more?
Okay. Okay. So, again, it's a requirement from Dodd-Frank that in order for us to participate in the lease pool, we, and Cindy, you come help me. We buy equipment.
You're explaining what she was asking. I didn't think you heard her saying, what's the lease pool?
Yeah, yeah, we work with the GMA, and we benefit from being able to purchase through a pool and, and so to be a part of that, we have to have that Global Markets Entity Identifier, and that's a requirement as a part of being a part of that lease pool. And so it helps us when we're buying equipment to be a part of that, and I think I got it right. And so I asked Ms. Cindy to come, but she might be able to add something to it. Let's find out.
We, in 2014, when we were, we had to establish the, I'm going to call it GMEI number, and every year, we have to recertify that. But in September 2019, they changed the rules where you actually have to have authorization for someone to go in and recertify that every year. And this is what we are needing to do. The lease pool does let us borrow money. We put into it, back in 1998, it's a 30-year pool, so we'll be coming close to the end pretty soon. And so we can buy larger pieces of equipment and pay it back over about a five to seven year term.
Thank you.
Cindy, this says for the, for the last five years, so is it $83 to $147 each year or just for the whole five years?
When I went back to research exactly how much we paid, last year, we actually paid $83, and in 2014, we paid the $147. So I'm really not sure why it's gone down, but, so that's why I gave the range of the $83 to $147. They will, I won't know until I actually do the certification, and, you know, it could be $150, I'm not sure until I go in on website and do all that. It doesn't give you an actual amount until you get everything done, and then it sends you your invoice.
They screen like an airport gate, you're right.
Pretty much.
So it can be $1,000.
I hope not.
We're not authorizing more than $147. Take it out on the account.
All right, any further questions by council? Okay, we're good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, with that being said, is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
All right, is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. And so we'll move down to agenda item 15, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments? All right.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Okay, I hope you guys are good. First thing, thank you for the consideration regarding the Parks and Recreation.
Tell us who you are.
My name, for those who do not know, my name is Keyshawn Howzie. I'm a student here at Georgia Southern University, a senior history major, African studies minor. I am also the SGA Vice President for Student Engagement. So I'm representing SGA to an extent, but my question, my first thing is, thank you for, in your, I guess, records for considering Luetta Moore Park and your discussions with the Bullitt County Parks and Recreation. That is something that I, in my time at Georgia Southern, have attempted to work with over the years, do a very successful, again, thank you for that. Second, I do have a question regarding possibly lowering, I understand, I don't know, and I'm not 100% sure if this is still true, but regarding the qualification age for running for office in State Spur, I remember seeing that it was kind of around the age of 24 you had to be?
25.
25, okay, yes. Is there any way we can work to kind of get that lowered?
Okay. Well, the age is actually dictated by the charter. So in order for us to change it, it would have to be some, it would have to be a change to the charter. So if you wanted to bring that in a formal capacity before city council, that's something that we could discuss. Can't make any...
Okay.
So in order to do something like that, we wouldn't be able to do that before the end of this session.
That's, yeah.
That's understandable.
Something that took place over the course of the year.
Okay.
And then we send it up to the State House.
Okay.
Probably sometime next year.
Okay.
If not, the year after.
Okay. Yeah, anything, anything that's dealing with the charter has to go through the state.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You interested in office?
A little bit, a little bit.
Okay, good deal then. That's what we want.
I am actually in District Five.
How old are you, Jerry?
Twenty-two, I'll be twenty-two in a few days.
Well, Ms. Barr will be here for four years, so you'll be over the age limit.
True, that's true.
Time to run.
Yeah. There you go, that's what I'm talking about. We need young people interested in civic engagement, right?
But yes, but thank you. I was, 'cause that was something I had on my mind, but I wasn't necessarily sure how that process would turn, work out.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate you requiring.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, take care. I love the energy of young people.
Yes.
Absolutely. With that being said, are there any further comments from the public? Okay, Mr. Two?
On behalf of Habitat for Humanity, with our emphasis on creating communities as opportunity, we also want to thank you for your initiative regarding to the parks. That is, that is something that Habitat International has taken a public stand for, that we need more parks, we need more recreation adjacent to low-income communities. That makes our low-income homes be located in communities of opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further, yes, sir, come forward.
Good afternoon to the council, Mr. Mayor and other members of the administration and audience. I'm Reverend James W. Bird Senior, member of the Concerned Clergy of Bullet County. And what we'd like to do is make a formal invitation to you, that we're planning a forum, if you will, at Luetta Moore Park on December, as you were, on February fifteenth. And the time right now, we have not nailed it down just yet, but we'll be sending you invitations to that. And it's very important because to engage the whole community, the members of the council and others to be aware. And there's a lot of discussion going on now about Luetta Moore Park, and we're just listening to you talking about the initiatives that's working with the different parks within the city. We are trying to address some of the issues, various initiatives that's going on within the city.
Okay.
And it's all about improving the identity, bringing about a better dynamics between, you know, the citizens of Statesboro. We talk about how Statesboro is one of America's best cities, if you will. Well, this idea here, the notion behind this is to improve that.
Okay.
And to show that the citizens are actually engaged in trying to improve the identity of Statesboro. There was another point that I wanted to mention that regarding Packing House Road, some interests, points have been expressed that that area, that street over there needs to be repaving, needs some attention, if you will. So just to bring it to your attention, to whatever division within the city that handles that. It's all about the citizens being concerned about their community.
Okay.
And that's what we're supposed to do. So again, regarding the forum that we're planning for February fifteenth, we would like to, you know, engage your presence there, all of you, so we can just talk about some things and move forward with the city.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, Reverend Bird, when you get that time narrowed down, will you let Ms. Penny know it?
Absolutely.
So he can get us invited.
Absolutely, yes.
And are there any specifics that we need to be prepared for, for the meeting on the fifteenth?
What we'll do, because it's in the beginning state, I'll make sure you get that, so it's good to be well informed, so you do that. So we'll make sure we identify specific points, talking points that will help you address the issues, you know, concerns.
All right, and so just as a point of information, we had a work session today, and part of that work session was actually addressing some of our resurfacing plans.
Excellent.
And so we will be resurfacing this year. We do have a 2020 plan for this year, so we're really excited about that. But just kind of give, give everybody, you know, a kind of a point of clarity. The city in the past, and John and Phil, y'all kind of, you back me up on this if I'm going astray, but we didn't have the T-Splat funding.
Okay.
That we have now. And so we're working really diligently to pave roads in areas that's kind of been left behind.
Okay.
Last year, we was fortunate enough to pave about ten miles of road inside of the city. Right now, we have about six and a half miles scheduled for this year. And so this is gonna be a continuous process, and we're hitting the neighborhoods with the worst roads right now.
Good.
And so we're working our way through the community, but it's gonna take time.
Of course.
And just to be, just to be frank, we know it's a concern, but what we're asking is for the community to recognize that we're working towards that goal, and it's just as important to everyone that's up here as it is to the citizens that's out there, because I believe everybody up here wants to make sure that every road in this city is paved, and it's gonna take us a little while to get there, but we're getting there.
Very good. This is the kind of dialogue, Mr. Mayor, that helps to appease with the citizens and for them to be informed and be aware that things are happening.
Absolutely.
Excellent, okay.
Absolutely. We'll definitely be there.
Excellent, thank you, thank you.
Say that again? Okay, see, see, hey, Pastor, see how God work? See how it work?
You want me to say that loud?
Yeah, we were just informed, the Packing House Road is under the design right now.
Well, there you have it.
There you go.
So let it be written, so let it be done.
That's right, that's right. I like Pastor.
Now, don't complain about the traffic when we start paving.
All right, yeah. So, good deal. Any further, any further discussion from the public? All right, and please? Well, he know I gotta show respect right now.
Come with my first time.
Come on. Absolutely, how you doing, Steve?
Charlie Jackson.
Yes.
Yeah, I live in Whiteville, in District One. And what I'm concerned about, I wanna learn how to approach this kind of little meeting, and how, there's a park behind my house there, and me and two more guys, we organized it many years ago, and I'm the only one that's still living. And I wanna discuss with District One there how to approach what the city can, you know, help them with getting it back going and get somebody to operate it and see about it.
Yep, and during our work session today, I actually mentioned that park and putting, it's something that's been mentioned before and we certainly need to budget for it, but I know exactly the property you're talking about, the little white building that's right on there, right across from the church there.
Right.
That would be an ideal location for a park. Currently, it's not, that's not city-owned property.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so it would require either that association turning that property over to the city or the city acquiring it in some way, because we can't work on private property. But were that to happen, it's something I've been, something I've been working with some of the members of that Neighborhood Association with for a number of years. Some wanna turn it over, some don't, and there's been a little bit of friction.
Well.
But the community was willing to turn that over to the city, I think that would be a great first step towards getting us the city park there.
Well, you're correct, you know, what it did, we used to point some people to see about it and operate it. And I guess some of them got working and couldn't do it, to be able to handle it and see about it and run it. And that's the only reason why it never been turned over to the city. And I am the one that, you know, organized, I'm the one that seen it was, bought from Charlie Oliver's donation that we raised many years ago. And by the way, I've been passed three scores in ten. So I would like to get with you and discuss what we can do and what can't do, what shall I understand about the city.
If the neighborhood was behind it, it would definitely be a great first step towards turning that thing into a park, which would be great for the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Mr. Jackson, let's kind of cut to the chase. For us to work on it, we have to own it.
That's it?
I understand that.
So with that being said, is that, is that a piece of property that will be, that you think will be willing to be sold, or do you think the city needs to come in and take control of it?
Well...
What is your thought process?
My thought right now is to sit down and have a good discussion about it.
Yeah.
And then, you know...
You know the mayor wanna fix it up.
Huh?
I said, I said, I wanna fix it up, so...
Oh, yeah, but I want it to be fixed up, but you know, I wanna, you know, get a good understanding about how you're gonna do it, what the city gonna do, and several other things I like to discuss, to what can be done after y'all take it over, and what can't be done after you take it over.
Okay.
I think that's what I would like to do.
Yeah.
Then we all be on the same line.
We'll do that. Well, that's your councilman, right, the Councilman Boyum? So I'm, that's his district, so I'm gonna let him lead the way in that district.
Well, I've been in that district for many years, since I was nineteen.
I know, I had a sign in your yard.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And just, you know, I know some of you don't know here, but your son, George, took me under his wing many years ago.
I remember that, I remember that.
And really showed me some work, so we're, I'm definitely grateful. Pastor Jones and Bishop Jones, I love, I love everything that y'all doing out there, but absolutely, but your son, George, he really took me under his wing, and he's someone that this community really, really miss. Absolutely. But we're definitely on the same page, and I think everybody up here has a commitment to recreational facilities and activities for the community overall. So I don't think it's gonna be a difficult conversation at all.
Okay, well, like I say, I get with you, you know, about turning it over and ironing everything out, what can be done, how it can be done, when it do be open up, everybody realize what can't be done and what can be done.
Absolutely. All right.
Stick around after the meeting, we'll talk, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right, you take care. All right.